I call this meeting of the board's overall directors to the floor. We apologize for the lateness. We did have an executive session at 6 o'clock this evening for the purpose of discussing personnel and legal issue, and we're sorry I ran over. We appreciate your patience. Would you please stand now and continue to speak.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is later in the June call. This is our president. Mr. Hattler?
Here.
Mrs. Cozak? Here. Dr. Lockland? Here. Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Dr. Sorensen?
President.
Here. Thank you. Hearing of visitors, part one, is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board on anything on tonight's agenda upon which we may be voting. If anyone wishes to address the board, please rise and come to the podium. State your name and address. And there will be another opportunity to address the board again at the meeting. Solicitors report, Mr. Naples?
No report.
Thank you very much. Legislative report, Dr. Lockland?
No.
Thank you. Education and planning, Mr. Branko, would you do the enrollment report?
Yes, you have to hand out as a part of your agenda. I also just passed out an elementary class size sheet to everyone. One thing that I would note on the enrollment report, your overall enrollment report, we've been keeping an eye on our fifth grade numbers. Our fifth grade class sizes have been high as we looked at them throughout the summer. And in addition to keeping an eye there, we kept an eye on our kindergarten numbers because they appear to be low enough that we could make some adjustments within our staff to address the class size of fifth grade. And at this point, we believe that our kindergarten numbers are what they are. So we are going to utilize some of those positions to alleviate the class size in the fifth grade. And if you take a look, we are speaking about adding a section in fifth grade at Bagley Elementary to reduce the class size to 22 per class, and adding in fifth grade at Mountain View to reduce the class size to 23.
Are those numbers in kindergarten then reflect the switch or is that the way it is now?
That's, I would say at Bagley and at L E S, that's the way it is. We had a, there were six sections of kindergarten at L E S last year. We had a kindergarten teacher who retired. So we held that position until we firmed up our kindergarten numbers. That's the position that will go to Bagley Elementary in that fifth grade. At kindergarten, we had five sections. Those numbers were at 16 per class, but we feel comfortable with the number being at 20. So we moved that section, we actually moved that teacher to third grade, and then a new hire will go into the fifth grade to reduce that number. The fifth grade class size at Mountain View at four sections was 29, 28 kids. We were very uncomfortable having that number in that grade level.
What was the number?
So, so to answer, they were, we had two classes of 29 and two classes of 28. So to answer your question, it is reflected in the class size at Mountain View, but it is not at L E S.
The numbers that are here though are-
Are the actual numbers.
Are the actual numbers.
Those will be actual numbers.
But the change was made.
That's right.
Yes.
Yeah, the numbers you're asking.
Yes, the change was made at, at Mountain View, and the number went from 16 to 20.
Where, what is kindergarten teacher? There's one kindergarten teacher. Is there an aide in the room with the kindergarten teachers or is this a teach?
In kindergarten?
Yeah.
The only aide that would be in the room would maybe be a personal assistant who's maybe assisting another child. We have, there are three classroom assistants at, at Mountain View, and those classroom assistants are going to move in and out of those rooms. There's not an aide that's assigned to that on a permanent basis.
So if there's an aide in the room, it's just an assist, age, special needs student?
For providing intervention to someone, maybe reading intervention or math intervention.
Well, I'd watch the kindergarten teacher as 20 kids.
That, if you, if you look at our first grade numbers, those would have been our kindergartners last year, and we were at, we were at 20 last year.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
I'm mostly concerned about 26th of the third year at L E S.
Or-
Are we thinking that number, that kindergarten numbers can change there at all?
At L E S? No.
Same thing.
We were trying for a lot of the best activity that we could across the grade level. And we looked at, we looked at me.
We have, yes, it is.
We, we looked at me.
That, that's my aide.
Yes, ma'am.
So, so will be.
And that's more classroom assistants that are really to, that we utilize. Yes. Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Palmer? Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Education and programs, Dr. Pepper?
No report.
Thank you, Dr. Pepper. You have a handout that gives you the curriculum committee meeting that was held on the last meeting in June, and the next meeting of the curriculum committee will be held on September 17th at 5:30 in C S D, and of course, everyone is welcome to that. So, please read the minutes and look at that. I will move for adoption of resolution number 001 to approve the partial hospitalization services provided by Adalphi Education.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number one. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? They have that resolution pass as you can, honestly. That ends education and planning, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Elder for finance.
For finance, I'd like to consolidate the two, approving the treasurer's report and approving the payment of bills and moving for adoption for both of those.
Second. It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolutions number two and three. Any questions or comments, discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Both of those resolutions pass unanimously.
And the next finance committee meeting will be held the first Wednesday in August, which is Wednesday, October 7.
August 7.
Oh, it's 7. Sorry. At 10:00 a.m. at the Central Administration Building. And I'd like to move to accept a grant of $7,000 from the Greater Luttrell Partners in Education Foundation for the purpose of supporting personnel costs. I will move for adoption of that resolution.
Second. It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number four. Any questions, comments, or discussion on that motion? All those in favor then of adopting the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you. That concludes my report. Thank you, Mrs. Elder. And we'll move to appropriate and supply, Mrs. Cozak.
Yes, in your handout, you see the minutes for our last meeting, which was July 3rd, July is at 11. Let's see if it's listed there. I don't know. Do you have any questions? I'll read those things. And, yes.
Hi, just real quick, excuse me, one minute. Just real quick, where, where was that wall? I remember-
It's above, it's way up, the, the wall in L E S?
Yeah.
It's way up high, it's above the, what do you call that course?
The parapet?
Yes.
Thanks. The, I'm kind of waiting for months, a lot is kind of in June construction, but I'll keep you updated. Currier sun's basically completed, fieldhouse first floor framing, the slab on deck has been installed, and slab on grades, both floors, concrete poured for your fieldhouse. The press box pre-cast floor, which is kind of your structure, has been installed, and they've been installing the decorative C M U for the last couple of weeks at the press box level. And they're up about four feet. Fieldhouse interior partitions, as far as masonry, are about 70% complete on the first floor. Removing in the rain as well as possible. The big kind of milestone, hurdle, everyone's kind of curious and wondering about in the past, every day, is when are we going to have turf? Turf will be going down tomorrow. We finished the subgrade today. Track, asphalt paving has been going in the last couple of days. We're up to subgrade tennis courts, as you've seen out front. We started excavating and demoing of the green space for additional parking. There's a lot of things happening, a lot of things being touched, so we are moving quite rapidly in the weather we have for the summer.
The retaining wall of the tennis courts.
Retained wall of the tennis courts been installed, retaining wall of the bleachers been installed, natural stone retaining wall of the tracks been installed. Removing, fieldhouse, can move a little faster, but we're doing well. Weather permitting. August 12th is the big deadline for football, so turf starting tomorrow, and see, I don't anticipate any issues with not being ready for football. So schedule wise, I think we're doing pretty well with the rainfall that had, which has been pretty significant here in June and July. As always, I've given you kind of photographs of where we work in June and where we're in July, and you can see quite a lot have come a long way, especially getting the slab on deck of the first floor installed, and we start backfilling and really making some progress. Also have images of the retained walls that were mentioned, of the natural stone retained wall, which is down the corner by the fieldhouse, down the corner of the track, and also the base of bleachers. And some additional photos of just the prep that's involved, coordination with the carpet down of your turf. Fieldhouse as well, some more additional images of the framing, the structural steel being installed, measuring bearing walls and partition walls. We've started ductwork, like the electrical work above ground, so we're out of the ground. And we'll talk about dirt and floating's going up, and we're moving quite rapidly. Construction activity, as always, to kind of give you a list of things that we are doing and the process of doing, things that are upcoming. Things I have in the talics, or things I kind of see may quite hit the milestone because of the weather, but I see a kind of estimate completion dates for those. Still doing pretty well. As always, the project cost summary, billions from the general are listed, with roughly 44% of contract completion and their schedule by, so as always. Site contractors are roughly 56% contract completion. Small billing from the H R C contractor, plumbing and electrical. As far as billing, as far as scheduling, you know, we're set to be complete by the first of the year, so you're roughly 50%, 5% complete as far as your projects, so no major headaches, I hope, from anyone who's-
So we're 50% complete, but how much in dollars have we built? And that needs to be totaled. Total product wise, we are at... We're at 4.4 million and change.
Probably under 50%.
48% under 50. And we're still to be done by December. We have differential about 10 or 12% between billing and time.
Majority of that's been your site contractor, which is phase ahead of time as opposed to your general.
So they're going to pick that back up somewhere like 20, maybe somewhere like that?
Your site contractor's going to be-
You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah. Your site contractor's going to be billing a lot more in the next month or so because it's because the rate's down, as the turf goes down, a lot of work is done in a short amount of time, so it'll be, you know.
And then I saw the change orders are hanging around like 1%, 2% total contract, which is amazing, it's a good job. And the T C O's are 43,000. I mean, is that, do you see anything else hanging out there that's up there?
There's nothing, nothing this month that, that we have to talk about, so, so far so good.
Really is truly amazing, but if you're, if that was going to yield, you're talking about 1.2% or something like that. And you have 43 hanging out there that's legit?
Good job. So far.
So far.
That's all we get, yeah.
As always, any questions? I think closing my report, and I'm running away, so I'll try to get it short. Any questions? Official questions? Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for, thank you. Okay, so I'd like to conclude that for the adoption of resolution number five, we award the bid for masonry at L E S in the amount of $10,800.
Next. It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number five. Any questions, discussion, or comment? All those in favor of adopting resolution number five, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously.
I move for the adoption of resolution number six, we award the bid for ceiling and paving parts of lots of Bagley and Mountain View, and the amount is $17,802.7 to Lux.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number six. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? All those in favor then, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously.
I move for the adoption of resolution number seven, permission to advertise for bids for the food, for the food service truck, a gator, and an audio visual system for the house supply, George.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number seven. Questions, comments, or discussion on the motion?
Audio visual system.
That would be for the senior high state or auditory, and not only the exact paper model, but I know that Robyn can't working on getting specs together.
A projection system that can be used, so there's presentations being displayed on screen, if they don't have anything, and then also, I guess, if they have some issues with the sound system.
Yeah, that's a terrible issue.
Right, right. So we had already been looking into the video system, and then we decided that it probably would be best to just tie them together.
You're looking at all of them, or you're looking at each piece?
Well, there is no video system at this point, so there is no thing there. The sound system, I mean, we're almost there with that, so we're just looking to come all together.
Any other questions, discussion on the motion? All those in favor then of adopting resolution number seven, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously. That, Mrs. Cozak? Student activities and recreation, Dr. Lockland? Just a reminder, still the day is Friday, August 7th, downtown stadium, and Mark, have a question.
Yeah, I'd like to introduce the board. I have an intern this summer and fall. You can stand, Dan, have an ante. He's from Seagill University, has to get 120 hours into the summer of fall, and they called and asked if he could intern with me. I just struggled, and I'm like, do you realize what I'm trying, what's here, and we're going to get interns in fall, and my truck, with all this going on? So he's been with me for two days, and getting an idea of the hustle and bustle, these helping plan schedules and adjustments and confirming things, I'm thumping him right into it. And he's excited to help us deal tonight, because they have, you want to say, he's a sports management major.
Oh, yeah, sports management major, minor in finance. Just excited to get the opportunity just to see what goes on.
So when you see him around this fall, sporting events and things, you'll recognize why he's here, everybody's there.
How much credit do you get for spending 120 hours in his tennis?
Yeah, you know what you don't understand is every time I'm on this construction, I call out most of them, I intern. I've never had anybody that-
Nice. We all need one.
Anything else, Dr. Lockland? No? Any relations, Dr. George?
There's a guy there that, brother, he's going to be tore up in a complex tomorrow. He may have a complex in there, there's a name.
There you go. Thank you. Nothing happening at the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit, we have not had a meeting. Our next meeting will be August 6th, designated when we do all hiring and everything there. E W C P C, Mrs. Cozak? No report. Thank you. Board policy, P S B liaison, Mrs. Elder?
Yes, you all received your copy at your places of the suggested changes to the board policy, which we had first reading of last, the last time we met, which was last month. And these, as I understand, these suggestions were made by someone in the foundation?
Yes.
And I think that they are very reasonable, and they certainly don't change the thrust of any other part of the policy. It's really just a safeguard, I think, to make sure that the board can dictate the naming rates, and also that no one puts inappropriate or unreasonable conditions together with a big hunk of money, and you can't have the money without the conditions. And it already says in the policy that we can't have that happen. So the board has the ultimate authority over all of this, and I would recommend that we adopt resolution number eight, the final adoption of the board policy, naming of sports facilities.
Second. It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number eight. Any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously.
And I'd also like to add to the board members that I've asked that next time we meet, there is a handout on the suggestions for numbers that the foundation has come up with, because I, I think I know where mine is, but it isn't in the computer, so we'll get that for the next meeting to go along with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Elder. Transformation, Dr. Lockup?
Thank you. I move for the adoption of resolution number nine, to approve the individual transportation objects, or listen, allowing students that are transported by their parents due to the fact that we can't get a bus here or out of work.
I hear second.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number nine. Questions, comments, or discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously.
And I also move for the adoption of resolution number 10, which is the 13, 2014 pupil transportation center.
I hear second. Thank you. It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number 10. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously.
As part of my report this evening, I'd like to say that most officers from here, all the new buses are in purchase by the transportation area. There is a site that's located for the permanent location of the transport of the buses. All the drivers were hired, there are a number of drivers now.
There are about 95%.
Okay. And all the routes are done for the elementary schools. Senior high school should be finished, go to Marv, okay, so I had a schedule from last year. This goes back to the district bigger software that we bought, that has a better integration of the district's information, so that's all paying off. And what I believe on that?
The vans are just about done too, they're going to be finished tomorrow, we have jam around.
So thanks for coming together, my super good orbit tomorrow, Wednesday at 3:00 p.m. at the senior high school conference room, more details on transportation.
One thing I will add, that is interesting, we've kept, we've retained a lot of drivers. No one knew how that would all unfold, but I think that's going to relieve a lot of parents. I want to say we were on 25, 36 to stay, and I think they married the majority of those that are off me, and they're going to keep their traditional routes also. And that's huge, because the drivers don't know that.
And we're getting a bunch of new buses.
Just a lot of brand new school buses.
Yellow, right.
And there you go.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Technology, Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. No report this evening, however, we can have a technology meeting on Tuesday, September 10th at 6:00 p.m. in C S D here.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Superintendent's recommendations, Mrs. Swire?
I ask the board to move on resolution number 11, which is two resignations noted on the agenda, Cindy Compeilia as the National Honor Society advisor, and Shelley Stillwagon as classroom assistant.
It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number 11. Any questions, comments, or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 12, which is the professional personnel appointments that were listed. There are 10 there, they'll go on the next page of your agenda.
I approve.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number 12, the professional personnel appointments. Any questions, discussions, or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 13, which is the substitute teaching appointments. There are quite a few names here, most of these are from last year, we reappoint them. There will be more names next month as we interview and recommend more substitutes, but to get the list started, so if you want to take a minute to scroll down, because it is quite lengthy, but that's why it's so lengthy, because these are people that have served the district in this capacity and talent.
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
If anyone wants to be taken off this list, do they have the ready notes?
Yep. It's an automatic renewal?
Thank you. And as you're all there in the area, not just at Greater Luttrell, substitutes are in need, and so we want to get as many hired as we possibly can before we move into school.
So moved. Second. It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number 13, the professional personnel substitute teaching appointments. Any questions, discussion, or comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously.
I'd ask the board to move on resolution number 14, which is the support personnel classified appointments. I know that Mr. Mears could expound on some of these coaching recommendations if you would like more information as the names are listed.
I hear a motion? Go. Second. It's been moved in second, and we adopt resolution number 14. Now, any questions, discussion, or comments on the motion? All those in favor then, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously. That's the end. Thank you very much. Any other business to come before the board this evening? Hearing that, we'll go to hearing visitors, part two, and this again is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the board, and this time you can't talk about whatever you like, just please approach the podium and state your name and address. Good reason.
Hello, Jenny messed up on her rebuild office room. First of all, I want to say I have an incoming fifth grader. Thank you for hiring, whether it be at V D S and Mountain View. 29 is way too many for our classroom. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Students, thank you, teachers, thank you. I wanted to say, this summer, I got my children bridge books, classic bridge books, for type of common for standard, and they are fantastic, so I want to standardize to allocate for maybe the next, end of next school year, to maybe whether it be during the term, for all elementary-based kids to either receive this book, or a book, you know, of their own- this book or a book, you know, of their choosing. They're fantastic. I know there's the summer slide, I mean, every year they come back, they got their immediate test. I'm just gonna advocate for them because I think they're fantastic. And that's all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to, to talk to the board this evening? Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Thank you. It's been moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yeah.
You're a girl.
That passes, yes. Thank you for your time.